Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, October 9th Board of Education Special Meetings to Order, and I will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll turn it over now to our Superintendent, Ms. Mary Fox Alter.
All right. Okay. Happy Fall, everybody. Welcome to the month of October. So, October is National Principals Month, so we're going to make sure we're spending time, and I'd like everybody to join me in thanking our principals for all that they do. They are the captains of our schools, and they perform such important connections in terms of teaching and learning, and with our students and staff. So, we look forward to celebrating and recognizing their work this month. The Austing School District, in partnership with Westchester County, has rolled out a new safety measures to protect students and ensure traffic laws are enforced. Our Board President, Christine Monjimelli, knows very well this was an issue near and dear to her heart, as it was for the entire Board. As part of this initiative, the district's fleet of buses are now equipped with 13 traffic cameras, both inside and out, and we will be having a news event coming up very shortly. More info to follow with the County Executive and Channel 12 News, so we will be the yes to come, and, okay, so we're going to look forward to doing that. Last night, we had an ENL Parent Light, and thank you all who joined us, it was well-attended. We have a newly-formed, modified girls cheering squad, so that's a wonderful, I'd love to see middle school students get involved, and having activities, the extra and co-curricular, are so important to their school experience. Our varsity football team won against the Yonkers Brave this past weekend, and our cross-country teams competed this weekend, and our girls' team took home the Rivertown Team Cup, which is terrific. Our Roosevelt Student Council leaders have been working and planning on their PBIS initiatives. I think we'll make them a student presenters, coming up at an additional Board meeting. Our 6th grade students made piñatas for Hispanic Heritage Month, and I want to thank our amazing high school teachers, and our band students, for an outstanding concert. They were able to raise, just in the concert alone, not the live auction, just for the concert, $6,254, just in the concert alone. That is outstanding. And then the live auction raised over $7,000. Now, there were some really good things in that live auction, and I kept on getting outbid. I think I did win one, but I want to thank everyone who contributed to that live auction, so it's great. $13,000 for our students, fantastic. All right. Now, I just want to, and I want to thank everyone who participated this weekend in our Heritage World Cup soccer game on Monday. And everyone had great weather, which was terrific and a wonderful turnout. So, last week, I think it was last weekend, I had the pleasure of attending for a couple of hours the District Equity Committee Meeting. It was a full-day event at Bethany, and while I was there... ...now, as part of my superintendent's update, and just introduce themselves, who they are, and give a little update about their equity work. They were so eloquent. It just gave me such great hope for the future. They were wonderful.
All right. I just have to make sure that this works. Okay, the mic is working. Okay. Good evening. My name is Mia Scottegay-Domar, and I'm a junior at Austing High School, and I'm also the proud founder of OHS Noticias. Today, we're here to discuss mainly what we, as students, took away from attending the first District Equity Retreat of the school year. And as someone who's attended these committees for approximately three years now, I can say this meeting had a distinct feeling to it, and it wasn't just because of the current sociopolitical climate. This time around, I was not only older and far more knowledgeable than the first time that I ever came to these meetings, but I was also far more aware of our mission. We had recently redefined what it means to call "educational equity," and even though I know for some, they think it's a buzzword, this is truly the why behind anyone who involves themselves in education decides to come to work every day. It's why teachers in poor states have second jobs and don't just transfer to a bigger city with a prettier budget. It's why administrators stay despite constant turnover, and it's why students and their parents don't just go to a charter school. And it's why in our library, we keep a shelf of banned books, and why I came to Claremont School Equity Club and opened textbooks and found just how deeply rooted hatred and bigotry was in the original American way of life. Educational equity means each student has what they need to define and experience their own success, experience joy in learning every day, and to see themselves reflected in the context of their learning, as well as the educators who serve them. It provides a climate in school that attends to race, ethnicity, language, culture, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, religion, disability, and socioeconomic status. And while some may not choose to use these exact words, it's our mission. It's our mission not only to give education, but to give education justly, equitably, which now more than ever is one of the strongest forces we have. And at a time of unrest that we are in now, we found it very important for us to be able to discuss things. In our meeting, we called this courageous conversations, but some of you probably already know this by the awkward Thanksgiving dinner conversations that you have with family members that make you dread coming next time. But in what we called courageous conversations, we identified our own compass, as we called it, where our ideas and our self were when we were discussing things. We could be speaking from an intellectual standpoint, we could be speaking from a knowledgeable standpoint, we could be, well, those two are synonyms, from a moral standpoint, from an emotional standpoint, and additionally important, a social standpoint. What do we actually do besides just talking? What do our actions say? There were times during these conversations that the people around me could identify things that I can tell they were scared to say out loud, because they knew that in this moment, they were being perceived, and they couldn't necessarily control how other people perceived them. But with this compass, and through orally admitting where exactly our mind was out loud, we could better, not necessarily change our perspectives and our perceptions, but to give them more reality. As for myself, I could identify that from my experiences as growing up as the eldest daughter of Venezuelan immigrants and in a family of refugees, discussing some of these current events in this world, leading me heavily into my moral and emotional corridor. These are things that are embedded deeply in me, that I say with pride, but also knowing that I am to be perceived differently by others, and not even necessarily in a negative way, or in a discriminative light, but pity and sorrow, and these are things that are heavy for me to carry. But because of the structure of these conversations, emotions kind of went a two-way street, I'd say. We didn't just vent, but we also were able to fully discuss and admit, and to break down and understand. And something that we remember in these conversations is that we won't necessarily leave with a sense of closure. After all, these things that during our conversations that affect us are often far greater than our own power can reach. But this one conversation, and the many more that I know are to come, are at least one more step in the direction of action that we must take in order to continue our mission. Our mission to allow them, the students, to again define and experience their own success, experience joy in learning every day, and to see themselves reflected in the content of their learning, as well as the educators who serve them. Thank you.
Evening.
I will raise this a little bit. My name is Cambry Wells. I am one of four Wells children currently going through the Austing Public School System. I'm a senior at Austing High School. ...and who I don't, who shares the same beliefs that I do and who doesn't, who sees me for who I am and who doesn't. From a young age, our youth have been using deep analytical skills to understand the core fundamental topics of what makes our society human. We also address the importance of this year's curriculum focus, criticality in our education system. I want to start off with a quote from Muhammad, who we also talked about during our Equity Meeting, and he says, "Criticalty is a capacity to read, write, and to think in ways of understanding power, privilege, social justice, and oppression, particularly for populations who have been historically marginalized in the world." When youth have criticality, they are able to see, name, and interrogate the world, not only to make sense of injustice, but to also work towards social transformation." Close quote. It is unparalleled what youth go through today, and what they may face in the future. But as we continue to use critical thinking skills and see our communities for all what they are, we are paving the way for our students to embrace their individual ways of thinking. Thank you.
Good evening. It's just good, right? All right. Good evening. My name is Khalil Kadet. I am MBK Fellow for Austing. What else? Austing 4122 Mechanical Department Head, and Black Diamonds Officer for a P-Skill Chapter. And then, attending this Board Equity Meeting was really eye-opening to me, because we talked... in the future, and creating an environment where more kids and students can feel more open to talking about different political, social, economical views that they may have, without having to feel critiqued or any hatred against them, and more people being more willing and open-minded, which would better help our nation. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Well-stated. Thank you, Khalil. Perfectly stated, actually. All right. And Board, any questions for our students?
I don't have any questions. I do just want to start off by thanking you for coming, and sharing your experience with us, because it's so important for us to see your experiences, and especially as you reflect back. I know Mia mentioned Claremont, you know, our students don't wake up as like 17-year-olds, let's say, one day, and say, "You know what? Today, I'm really interested in social justice." And so, it's nice to see that some of the seeds we plant at these younger grades can blossom into what you've shown for us today. So, you are here representing yourselves, you're here representing your organizations, but you're here as part of a larger community that I hope you feel has lifted you up and supported you in your ability to share your voice so freely in this way. So, I just really appreciate your taking the time to come speak with us and acknowledge that. When you speak, I hear that this is not something you just woke up and decided to feel today, right? That this is something that you have grown into. So, I just want to say thank you for that, and I want to open it up to anybody else on the Board. If you have anything else to add, you can.
I'm just going to say thank you so much for coming. I mean, honestly, it takes a lot of courage, passion, and I definitely feel the passion coming through you guys, and I know this wasn't born overnight, that this is kind of like, you know, cumulative of all of your experiences, and embellishing in your, well, relishing in the experiences of the other folks that you've come across. So, I will say to you guys, take your passion, move it forward, continue to do great things that you guys are doing. I think you guys are going to make some pretty big impact in this world, and hopefully, as you guys go into, I know you're going into, you'll be a...
Thank you.
Yes, and you don't have to feel any pressure to stay and observe the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, as is the public, but you can make a graceful exit right now if you so choose.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else in your update?
That's it.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is public comment. Before we open this up, I do want to make one caveat, that if you have a public comment that pertains to our district-wide safety plan, that the public hearing portion of that meeting will also include a comment period for comments that relate specifically to that. Is there anybody here in person who wishes to speak? Illy, do we see anybody online? All right. Then, let's move ahead with the public hearing. I have to make a statement here. Pursuant to Education Law Section 2801-A and 8 NYCRR, New York Codes, Rules and Regulations, Section 155.17, a public hearing is required prior to adoption of the district-wide school safety plan. The plan is required to be reviewed annually and updated if necessary. The plan is posted on our website and made available for public comment for at least 30 days prior to adoption. The public hearing provides for participation of school personnel, parents, students, and the community, and any other interested parties to comment and ask questions. This segment of the Board of Education meeting has been designated for the public hearing and the revised district-wide school safety and emergency management plan. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Fox Alter, who will introduce our speaker.
So, in our wonderful work here today, we are very proud to be partnering with Altaris. So, this evening, we have Paul, and we have Michelle. If you could just do a overview in your presentation of the plan.
Sure.
Thank you. Angela, should I click through it, or can you?
I'm going to share it.
You can do it from up here, Paul.
Sure.
Right, okay. It'd be easier to click from here, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, some of the new pieces, well, first of all, a little background. The reason we have to do another 30-day public comment period, and then another approval process for the district plan, a little bit different this year than most years. We met the requirements, we submitted to public comment on time, we approved it on time, and then the state gave us some last-minute additional amendments and changes, which then required another 30-day public comment period. And I could go through all these, but I think you guys are pretty well-versed in it. The sort of short of it is, they clarified some language. There were updates about how we do drills. They added language about drill notification, one to seven days for parents, just before the drills for staff and students, and so on. They also explained, if we're going to do a certain type of drill, what the requirements are, the parental consent, the opt-out forms, and that's for a specific kind of drill, they put a lot of language in here about that, a specific kind of drill that most districts don't do, but that is incorporated into the plan. It's a large, sort of all-inclusive drill, including law enforcement, fire services, ambulance, and so on, but for the most part, districts don't do that. But the language had to be included, it was a state mandate. Some of the things regarding our standard drills, our 12 emergency drills, we have to make notifications. There's clarification about how we conduct them, when we conduct them, meaning it can't be on the same day, we can only do one drill on each day, we can't do drills on the same date and time all the time. It always can't be Tuesday at 9:30. It's got to be different days of the week, different times of the day, and so on. So, that sort of is the biggest change, the language change that was added to this new district-wide safety plan. There was a little bit of language in there about maps. We had to have some requirements in terms of what goes into our plan, and that had to be referenced as well. Facilities is taken care of that, it's being taken care of at the building level, but it needed to be referenced in the district plan as well. So, those really are the big changes, and I'm pretty sure everyone here on the Board is well-aware. If you have any questions, I can certainly clarify them. If there were any public questions that needed clarification, we can certainly address that as well.
All right. Are there any questions from the Board?
Yeah, thanks for this. So, what we're proposing meets the standards. Do districts sometimes do more drills? Do they, but you have to do a minimum, right?
Correct.
And do them a certain way. I'm just curious, like, are we, is there a recommendation to do more than what's in here, or?
That's up to individual buildings and district administrators. The state mandates 12 emergency drills, eight evacuation-fire drills, and four lockdown drills, with additional of one early dismissal, which really isn't a drill, it's more of a procedural thing, but we have to do those. The recommendation, and what we push out in terms of suggestions to the building administrators is, you can always do more. If you did a lockdown drill and you weren't satisfied with it, or you wanted to make some changes, you can certainly do more. The 12 is a bare minimum, and to be perfectly honest, most districts do 12, and that's it. They sort of chase it, hurry up, we got our drills done, but absolutely, you can do as many as you think is valuable. Shelter-in-place drill, like with regards to weather, lockout drills regarding animals or law enforcement activity or something, those aren't mandatory, but we do suggest you do that. So, they certainly can do more, but the 12 is what's mandated.
And Mary, so we give the flexibility, as you just indicated, if something didn't look like it was perfect, buildings and administrators can do them over, or whatever they need.
The one thing I would say that is a great addition that Austing does above and beyond a lot of other places, is that there is always a meet afterwards and to debrief, which is so critical. As a matter of fact, Paul and Michelle run those so professionally, like clockwork with the building teams, and it doesn't even have to be one of the drills, it could be just an incident that happened. They are here for us, they also run the meetings at the district level. So, that's been a huge change, and Austing embraced that by bringing on Altaris in order to do that and look at it that way. So, it's a really important addition.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I'll go around. Roger, do you have any question?
I'm good at this time.
Any? I have one question, and something that I'm hoping you can speak to, and I don't know if this is new, or if I've just not noticed it before, but I wanted to highlight that what I read, as I understood, one drill of any sort, I think, must happen during lunch, or an assembly, or other time where students...
Mass gathering time.
Mass gathering. Is that a new requirement?
It is.
Okay.
And that's normally geared towards our evacuation drills. Like here at AMD, they did one recently. They did, lunch was full, and we did a blocked exit, and, you know, all of those things that are now a requirement at a mass gathering time, and that's the idea behind it. What the state, their intent, and I completely agree, is to try to make drills more practical. For years, most districts have done, nine o'clock on Tuesday, everybody knows it's going to happen, you're in class, you're prepared, you've got your key in your hand, and we've sort of plateaued with training value that way. So, now the state also recognized that and said, "Let's do it at more practical times." Change overtime in the hallway, arrival, dismissal, lunch, auditorium incidents, and so on. So, that makes perfect sense. The challenge for those, and we still agree it's a great idea, is that they're messy. You know, it's hard to do. The one that happened here was messy, and then there was a debrief afterwards, and a redo right afterwards, which is excellent training methodology. We love that.
All right. So, go back to, I guess, go back to the point of like, that was an example of, we redid the drill, right?
Correct.
I mean, like, so, just because of the debrief afterwards, the team had questions, okay, you know what? We're going to do it again.
There was, the drill was done, and it was chaotic, and there were, you know, "Hey, did you consider this? Did you consider going here? Why wouldn't we do it?" And then, golf terminology, they got a mulligan. They get to do it all over again, and say, "Okay, now that we've addressed those issues and we've offered some solutions, let's do it again." And it was much better.
Not that I'm suggesting that we would just do it once, but would both of those drills count towards the 12 drills when you redo it?
Yes and no. The state, one of their changes this year, like, last year, they would've. This year, one of their amendments is that you can only do one drill per day, in terms of counting towards your 12.
Right.
You can do two, like, if we did one and we debriefed and did it again today, you can totally do that, to your point, you can do more, but you're only going to get credit for one on that particular day.
And would, like, passing time between the bells, that would...
That would count as a mass gathering, and I think the probably more correct language is non-standard classroom time.
Okay.
So, whether it's outside activities, arrival, dismissal, changeover, lunch, something other than, "We're in the class prepped and ready."
Great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Sure.
Which is really just something to highlight. Are there any, at this time, I'll open it up to questions from those present. Is there any? Illy, is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
No.
All right.
All right.
Anybody else before I close it out? Last call? Okay. There being no further discussion, I declare the public hearing to be closed. I'd like to take a motion to move up item 5.1.
Sumoed.
Resolution 5.1, resolution to adopt the revised district-wide safety and emergency management plan. Any further, oh, I just have to take a motion to move it up, right?
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Now, I'll take a motion on the resolution itself.
Second.
All right. Resolution to adopt the revised district-wide safety and emergency management plan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. All right.
I'd like to also thank the Board for, we've increased the time we have with Altaris this year by another day, so again, it's another safety enhancement to the district. So, again, thank you both, and thank you to the Board for doing...
Yes, thank you to Paul and Michelle for coming out. You're dismissed, too.
Good night.
All right. Our next item is 4.1 in our work session, Equity Goals for the 2024-2025 School Year. I'll turn it over to Mary first, maybe you just want to talk about what you've written here. Is there any updates in what we have in front of us since the last time we've received this?
Yeah, a few. So, basically, again, I just want to reiterate how wonderful I think it is that the Board will be considering adopting district goals, from creating a frame through which the, those of us who work in the schools will be looking at our work. You have a wonderful, long-range plan with that fantastic portrait of a learner, which looks like the state adopted a similar plan for a portrait of a graduate. So, I would like that work, you know, highlighted, that when it was first created, the Board did put a period of years on it, so my request to the Board is that, you know, officially to make it part of a district goal, because also, it's the lens through which the presentations from the buildings will be presented to the Board and to the community. So, it provides that wonderful frame, it becomes this internal compass in addition to being the lens. And then, with those in place, what are specific goals that you would have to address that work? And in many places, I took a look at 33 different school districts, I knew it from a previous school district, these are some typical goals out there. A student goal, you can have a curriculum, an instruction goal, you could just have a curriculum goal, a facilities goal, a community goal, or sometimes people call that a communication goal, and communities separate them, and then, an equity goal. They're offered here with no particular order, but I'd like the Board to reflect on, you try to make them, we're a little bit late starting typically, you do this at the end of the last school year, and then that becomes the lens through which the summer retreat work takes place. You're going to be hearing some specific smart goals from the schools at the next Board meeting, and then the following Board meeting, and you'll also get a data report in November, so you'll get hard numbers behind this, and you will hear it in, we are data-informed, obviously, not data-driven, and you'll be hearing more about that. But in this case, there are... But in this case, there are some really significant things that the board has done in the budget process this year, and particularly in light of the wonderful approval from our community for the $210 million bond. You've got a fantastic project with the AC for AMD. We've got a wonderful new driveway coming up. And these are things, and you have a board equity policy. You heard from some students today. They're working on the work of that policy, and it was revised and adopted by the board last year. So I think that, and you've got some other big initiatives. I know the board wanted to have a curriculum and evaluation model. So I put these forth for your consideration. You can edit, delete, change, add. But also, this is a report then at the end of the year that the board reports out on. What did we do? What did we accomplish? What did we find we needed more of? And that informs your goals for the next year. And this becomes part of our record. This becomes part of the website. This becomes part of your work. So I love the idea. I think it's great. This is my offering to help start the conversation for the board and looking forward to a really good discussion.
Okay. And just to, I think we received this shortly before our last meetings, a version of this.
Yes.
Right? And so we've had some time to stew on it, right? I think last meeting, it was a little bit too soon to really be prepared to speak on it. Does anybody want to start things off or have anything they'd like to edit, change, add?
I guess just a quick question. So I know that, you know, we think in terms of the equity goal, but I mean, do we have, and maybe it's somewhere baked in here, some semblance of what we want our achievement gap, closing the achievement gap, like what that goal might be around that? And I'm just asking this question because I'm thinking in terms of, you know, we have all these wonderful goals of everything that we're gonna do, and each of them kind of work very harmoniously with each other to ultimately deliver a broader goal. I mean, I'm just thinking here, like by way of the equity goal or even the students' goal, what might we need to do that's going to help from a goals perspective to help close achievement gap? Does that fit into this in any particular space? And/or is there, am I just kind of like, this is much higher, and then maybe there's like a drill down beyond that that we probably kind of work, it ladders up to one of these goals?
So they will feel, and if you don't mind, Roger, I would also add that not just an achievement gap, right, but a growth gap, because in the development of those early discrete literacy in math schools, it's about the growth of it all. Later on, in the secondary level, it becomes about achievement.
Right.
So there's a slight difference, and the state actually talks about that in their testing report. So I think if you look at the student goal here, you know, support an educational environment that is warm, welcoming, safe, positive, and inclusive for all students, one where opportunities are equitable. And how do you know that they're not? By looking at data. Address the academic and SEL needs of students. Make sure they're nurtured and developed. Into that is this, that you want to foster academic achievement and growth for all students. You could certainly add that terminology there, and you will hear from the principals, because they worked on that. I know Maria can speak to it a little bit more, but they worked on that this summer in there. They looked at what does that mean at Park? What does that mean at Brookside? What does that mean at Claremont?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's very fair, because now we've got a lot of data that we haven't had in prior years in terms of where different things are from the, you know, the reading and the math. And, you know, I know, you know, at one point in time, I think this is before you, Mary, I talked about, you know, even looking at like, you know, writing composition and being able to write and articulate clearly there. But, you know, I think about this in terms of if we have certain data, and maybe this is like some, we can have this as a further discussion if need be, but we know we're at a certain level right now in the high school, or let's just say even in the elementary school, say it's like Claremont, what have you. If you have a certain amount where you've got X percent that's reading at a certain level, do we have such a thing where we look at, well, that X percent next year we're targeting, that to be a little higher, and these are the things we're going to do to support that? Do we have something like that?
Sure. That's exactly what the principals are working on right now, and they're very happy to have more robust sets of data to look at. But if you, and actually, Roger, your question is well-stated, because that's actually what the state does.
Yep.
And the state actually went, like, if I take a look at a level one, two, three, or four, we all know what those mean.
Yep.
So the state actually will take a look at a student who maybe last year, or a group of students where the score last year was a low two. This year, it's a high two, maybe very close to a three. But as you know, two still is developing.
Sure.
So the state believes that that level of growth is important to measure and highlight. So while the achievement levels might be a three or four, because people inaccurately look at those numbers as passing, which isn't true, but, so we want to look at growth within that and then encourage that. So it's a growth towards a target for, and so not all kids start at the same spot.
Sure, sure, sure. No, absolutely. And that's why, you know, we look at like where they are in the cuts and slices of each of those to kind of say, okay, if this is kind of where you are in terms of the band or however it's classified, we want to move that from X to Y and what the X to Y movement and all the pillar, all of the things that support that growth behind that. And I'm saying all this not to say that I want to kind of blow this out to be like a million pieces underneath it. I'm just thinking in terms of the framework that.
Maria can highlight a little bit of it as well, but working with Kathy last year, and Maria, through her grant from the state, doubled her time with us. She brought a really strong, I've worked with Kathy for years, and I'm, we're actually thinking of having her to present from the, to the board. She was a director of the rec. She was an assistant superintendent. She's a math and computer science person, so she has a deep background in this level of work. But she highlighted for us that, you know, if you were using a TC, I'm gonna do a broad stroke, so Kim, jump in if I mess this up, but if we were using before ARC, a TC-based model. However, growth on a state test is informational text. We weren't doing as much informational text. So when she looked at all the data, that was her point. She said, if you want to experience great growth for students, you focus in on informational text. So you have this switch now, and that's what ARC does, a lot of informational text. Now, you'll hear some pushback from some teachers about, I love my literature pieces, I love my poetry pieces, but in order to move the data on comprehension and literacy, but we want kids to love, love, you know, we love fiction and nonfiction. So you want to have a balanced literacy approach. But you really should be very targeted in your instruction of reading with that in mind. So last year, she did a lot of work with her principals, and they loved working with us this summer. She could unpack those scores. And then, of course, with our ARC consultants, they are working heavily to do that as well.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. It's just, that helps me frame this up, because I look at the facilities goal. We know very specifically, we're gonna be providing oversight of a $210 million project to kind of build this. We have a plan to do all of that, right? And so I'm just trying to figure out where are areas that we need, we could tighten potentially a little bit more. You know, I'll throw in a suggestion or two, but I just wanted to get your perspective, because I could be out of line.
No, no, you're right on, and I think our principals absolutely will be working on our, they were due to Maria last week, finalizing, look at data, to make sure that each of the buildings have individual SMARCA's that align more closely to what you're saying. It has that level of specificity. Yeah.
And each one of them started with where their baseline is and then set SMARCA's to achieve a specific goal.
Yeah. I appreciate that, because I think, to me, I just look at it in terms of, you know, we want to go point A, what's point B, what's point C? Because we are in a trajectory towards something, and at least if anything, we have a North Star. What's, these are, these here are all goals that we want to hit, but do we have any kind of empirical measure by which we're?
It is, I can tell you from an instructional perspective, as someone who, you know, boots on the ground in buildings all day, having a district goal adopted by a board of education that you want to see growth in academic work and achievement and equity and work, it's a really important piece. It's a very important piece. Yeah, it's a, go ahead, Maria.
For us, that's our North Star. So we ensure, again, starting with our baseline, where our children are, and then knowing where we need to be, and then we set specific action steps that'll lead us there.
Great.
... relevant and time-bound. And I think most of these hit that SMARCA piece. What I would love to, assuming other board members and administration sort of consensus building on this, I'd like us to, with a crawl, walk, run approach. So I'm not suggesting we go, each of these got to have a metric. We're year one. However, a couple of the big ones, I would challenge us to try to put in there. So let's, so here specifically about ARC. When we got ARC, I remember Ray Sanchez, question I think I asked it from that side of the room was, what's your goal with implementing ARC? Because Teachers College, for whatever reason, didn't work, right? That's why we changed it. There was a whole big push, spending, Jessica involved in that, spent a lot of time and money on it. And I remember him saying, the goal at the end of the four years, right, because it's a four-year implementation, was 80% across the district. That all students, 80% of students across the district will be reading on grade level then. And then I think there was some further discussion, well, maybe 70. But I would challenge us that all buildings, if that's still accurate, that should be the measurable piece of that goal. So I would suggest a conversation around for our educators to align with the district goal of, is it 80%? Is it 70% by the end of four years? Because that, you know, that, then we're all pulling up towards that, because that's what we publicly stated. Now, things could change. Maybe Park Schools only at 60 at the end of four years, and the high school could be 90. That's fine. It's not gonna be punitive. But I do think for that one, where the community, you know, we talked about it publicly, they were spending a lot of money, a lot of time, or teachers are spending a lot of time on that, I would challenge us to put a number on that, if that's 70 to 80% is across the district. I think that's a fair thing. So that's one part. And another part may be around the community goal as well, same thing. So we talk about engaging and building those partnerships. What does that look like? Is there a district-wide number that shows engagement? So is it based on survey results? Is it based on, you know, open rates, on newsletters? I think those two are ripe for putting a district measurable number on, but especially the ARC piece, because we've been on record saying that this is what we're pulling towards. So that would be sort of my first comment, assuming others agree with that, but that would be my comment on that.
All right. I have mixed feelings on that. Achievable and reasonable to expect a percentage of growth increase instead of putting the finish line out? If that, if that makes sense.
Well, I wasn't saying 80% this year, but we were, this board was on record three, two and a half years ago, saying, we're buying this thing, this is our thing, and the goal of this at the end of four years is to get across the district 80% of our students on grade level. We, this board is, this is prior to me being on here, but this board has stated that. So I'm not saying that should be this year, but why would we back off that now? Like, if we're only, I don't know what the number is.
I don't know what the number is either. Just to be clear, I just threw out a made-up number. That was not a number that I want anyone to quote me on.
No, no, I agree with it. I'm just saying that that was the whole point of buying, one of the key points of buying ARC. We, you know, the district, like, hey, kids aren't at the literacy rate, we're gonna buy this thing, and we were, you know, our research showed, discussion with ARC, we're gonna hit 80%. If we're not gonna hit 80%, okay, fine. But that was a publicly stated goal, so I don't, I don't know why on that one there would be a hesitancy not to tie to when it was publicly declared.
I think, if I may contribute to the conversation a little bit here, I'm gonna go jump back up on the balcony, that one of the reasons that we switched to ARC was because TC did not have fidelity of implementation. It lacked a science of reading component to it, and there was a different approach towards its implementation throughout the district. So, and that showed up in the state assessments and in then whatever other local assessments that were psychometrically balanced, was it NWE and others? So, and Austin wasn't alone in that. Many districts did the same thing, as we all know what happened to Lucy Cawkins and TC's model of reading. So to try to find a reading program that was core, holistic, and included a component for English language learners was critical. So again, and the buildings are in different places in terms of that level of implementation starting this third year. So I think at the end of the day, what the overall goal should be, you have to include the building principals, the people who are in the trenches working on it, to figure out where we are today and try to find a measure of growth in this. Everybody wants to improve literacy scores. There isn't a principal or teacher or anyone who doesn't want to take on that work. But I would really caution, I wasn't there for that conversation, nor do I, but I wouldn't have approached it.
I'm not sure if anybody at the table tonight here was, maybe Roger was, but, and frankly, like, the state averages less than 50%. I think to state that we're gonna, you know, almost double the rate of the average rate in New York State is not, it's not gonna happen next year, right? Like, it's very unlikely. There's no magic bullet. If there was one that worked perfectly, the literacy scores would be better across the, the average across the state would be better. You know, we're going to have ELA students or ELL students. We're going to have special education students. That is always gonna impact our average scores. And I think it's, we have to acknowledge that.
So it's a growth mindset as opposed to an achievement that, because by 70% literacy sounds like an achievement goal as opposed to an individual growth score for kids, and the state weighs them a little differently.
I am curious, Annie, are you talking into the mic? I can't, there we go. Okay. So I don't know if this is getting too into being prescriptive of what teachers are expected to do, and that shouldn't. In third grade?
You know, I think, Kim and Maria, you can add to the conversation, but there's a real comprehensive different approach once you hit third grade about certain levels, what are certain skills, and so how do you come up with a target that's understandable for every way without unpacking it for those reasons? Because the landscape does change. The state actually calls, you've got primary education, and then you've got elementary education. They actually define it that way. Elementary education starts in third grade.
Yeah, I wouldn't even necessarily say that they need to be on grade level, but just like able to read somewhat, you know?
Well, yes, that's what we want.
Yeah, I know.
Of course, of course, that's what we want. So I think, I think with, without sitting down and unpacking exactly what the board is asking for and sitting with our team together with teachers to come up with a growth metric that would be understandable. And I think that's a great conversation when the elementary principals come, you know, they're prepared to talk about it.
I would agree.
Yeah, so if that's, if it's not the 70 and not 80, and we're not comfortable with that, and that might have been. that, and that might have been said, pre-decided by prime administration, that's fine. But I do think this one should have some quantifiable, because is a 2%, and I'm not talking, I didn't, you know, specifically, they didn't say test scores. I'm specifically referring to, I assume when ARC comes knocking on the door after year four, if we want to keep this, we will ask them, okay, we went up X percent. If we stay with you another four years, fidelity of implementation, everyone's comfortable, what should we see? I assume they're not going to be, they're going to say to us, oh, you'll see an increase. I mean, we would push on that. They were saying right here, like, what are we going to see? Because you want to evaluate whether another four years, five years, and spending a lot of money, is that? So I do think, I agree, like, it doesn't have to be done tonight, it shouldn't just be the people around this table, we have educators. But I do think before finalize this one, we should try to get some measurable, whatever we're comfortable with. And if it needs to go by building, fine, if it's grade level, fine. But this, this really feels like we need a number to make sure we're on track for, you know, a measurable material increase in this one, because this is a big, this is a big one.
You could, at a district level, what districts sometimes do, will add a statement to a district goal from a board level to experience, you know, I'm spitballing here, but something to the effect of a percentage of growth specific to the students in that building. And then allow then the administrators to demonstrate what that means. You're not setting it, you're expecting a level of growth, specific to the individual needs of each school and building.
And I think, I think what makes it a little bit challenging is because the Princeton model, we are constantly moving our students. So if you were to look at like a K through five building, it's slightly different, because one building keeps a group of students over a period of time. So one of the things we could possibly look at is yearly growth, which would allow a building to take a group of students that they currently have to see, so I'll use Claremont, for example, that's just coming to my mind. They have the group of students for third grade and fourth grade, so they would be able to see that incremental growth over the two years that they have that group of students. Because then you're looking at holistically the same group of students that moved from third to fourth grade. When you're referring to ARC and going back four years ago, one of the things that we could potentially look at, and through multiple discussions, this isn't a solution, but obviously a discussion point, we could potentially look at the students that entered the ARC program four years ago, and the percentage rate of their reading level, or proficiency level, and then looking at four years later, the same group of students. So there's a couple different ways that I think we could measure growth. The one thing that we do have to caution ourselves around is a holistic, a holistic percentage. And the reason why I say that is because your subgroups of students are at different levels and different percentages. So if we say 80% growth, we're saying of a subgroup that may be proficient to increase to 50%, or to have an increase of 50% to bring it to 80. And I know, Bob, you didn't necessarily say it has to be 80%, but just for that example, it makes it a challenge to do a holistic for every single subgroup.
...for a school each year. So that's another way of looking at the information. And we can go back to our team and see if that is available for the board to take a look at, too.
Right. So for example, we might want to say, hey, the kids who started in first grade with ARC, when we implemented it, are in third grade now. We want to see what their scores are at the end of fourth grade.
Or proficiency.
Or their proficiency rates.
Their proficiency rate.
Yeah, or, and I, I do, I'm in, really interested in a growth percentage rather than a, a specific percentage at the end. I want to see growth rates. I, I don't think that we should be the ones to suggest a number. I don't think that that's appropriate.
Yeah, I, I hear you on that one. I guess that in terms of the not suggesting number, I think what it is, is to say, we know what's been working, and what's, how it's been working because of all the things that we've put in, that's been put in place so far. And I love your cohort analysis that you're contemplating, because that itself is revealing in, in ways that we probably haven't seen before. And to take that and say, we moved from here to here, and whatever that here is, you know, it, it tells us something really clicked. And that's that moment of, that epiphany of something clicked, and that could actually be valuable back to each of the buildings, saying, if, stay with us on this journey, assuming this is true, right? Stay with us on this journey, because we've seen this go. If you, we apply this consistently throughout, all the way through, we should start to see that go from wherever, where it was at starting point, to something much greater as it gets to its endpoint, right? And that's kind of where I think it would make sense from having a cohort analysis. And I don't know how easy or difficult that is to do, but I think that's a good idea, and I like that.
So we'll, we'll follow up on that. The other thing I'd like to add, although the results are still embargoed, you know, I can say globally, I can say this, the math results, this is what year of Math in Focus now got started in COVID?
We are in our fourth year of implementation for Math in Focus.
Math in Focus, right. So there was growth, as identified by the state, in all grades based on last year's state test. So, you know, you'll, you'll hear that as soon as they tell me I can talk about it in public, but just as a statement of that, you know. So, so it's very hard to put a, even just from that perspective, because the state does use cohort models, too, in their analysis, to be able to talk about a target based on last year's tests, and I can't give a target, because I can't mention the results yet, is a little tricky. So they are doing it in their schools, though. We're allowed to share that data confidentially amongst the, our staff. So that's the data they've been working with.
I have a question for you. The grading policy had come up in terms of equity, would that just roll into student goal or equity goal, or would it need to be specifically broken out?
You know, it can be that. It can be an action step based on that goal. Like, you know, like, you would turn, like, the way many times this has worked, you know, we would take these goals back to the, the administrators, the team, and say, okay, what do you see? What procedures, policies, and practices do you see that can, that are, that's not working to help support our equity goal? And so we've been using that, and that's how I found out about the policy. So by formally adopting, you know, I know the board adopted the equity policy, but framing it that way, that's been a conversation we've had with, with our administrators. I want you to think about the things that are going, taking place, and what procedures, policies, and practices do you find that inhibit your work towards that? And could have an unintended consequence, you know, like the, the policy around the Regents exams. We're discovering an unintended consequence around that.
I've got something else, but I know you want to go around the table, so that's, that's cool.
I think I actually interrupted you, so.
Oh.
It's a discussion.
This is our workshop. You don't have to go around in a circle over and over again. We're having a discussion. If you, I would say a next step on that item, it might be having Mary speak in partnership with the building principals, to see kind of where their, and Maria perhaps, to see kind of where their heads are at, as far as what they're trying to do, and maybe we can formalize that, and, and kind of take what they were doing, and insert that into what we're, what we want here. It's kind of backwards.
Yeah, I also think, just, sorry, not to keep harping on, but I think you've got, you hit on a really good point in terms of creating a reason to believe, in terms of a cohort analysis, right? That, that itself, even you bring that back to the building principals, to have a reason to believe, because without having that, you don't know what you've done, right? You, you don't know, when you get to the high school, you're already kind of taken on what's been done for the years before that.
Exactly.
Right? So, you know, it's just the impact years are really kind of those reading years, right? So getting, and having that sense of what's happened from first grade to fourth or fifth, whatever that year is, I think that that, I mean, that's what kind of gets, is like the leading indicator, that could perhaps be used, or the lagging indicator that could be used for relaying them back to the school principals and saying, here, here's something to believe.
And, you know, Maria, maybe that's something, well, let's, let's talk to Kathy about that, our consultant who does this data work, right?
Yeah.
So we do, one thing that we do is looking at our previous years, previous year children, and then looking at them now, and following that. So it's an immediate, it's a one-year cohort, but looking at it at a more vast, and seeing where the impact is.
Yeah, I, I, I really think that this is, that you can't, you're not going to, I just use a limited set of data, and I agree with you, you're right. I mean, this, having that longer length of time, because then that becomes the, the more tail effect of what's happening as you start to kind of make the impacts in, in that first year, the second year, and then the third year, it starts to stick, like, fourth year, it starts to become much more steady. And that's kind of the, the tail effect that we'll see through the data and the analysis. And I think that's, that'll be so telling for everybody, I think.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else on, on that specific issue regarding ARC and curriculum and instruction goal? Rob, you had something you wanted to add, perhaps, about some other part?
Yeah, yeah. So just something else to throw out there. And I know operations are baked into all of these, but just throwing out for consideration, like, an operations-type goal. And so here's one example, and just forgive me, I am going to come off the balcony and come to the stage a little bit more closely, Christine, because the operations are also what, also probably allow, get some of the possible agenda items that I throw out there that are operations-related, maybe on the agenda. But here's something that I've been literally been thinking about in the wee hours of the morning. So one of the things we've talked about, again, our lunch and recess, and we've seen some community questions about that. And I know there's a lot going on here about scheduling and other things that we have throughout the day, and contracts. But like, so if we were to do like an ops goal, Mary, if you like this idea, one of the ones that was in my head was around this lunch and recess thing. So I was like, well, if we wanted to try to make sure, because there's a, you know, there's a policy, right? We have board policy about lunch and recess times. But my, imagine the spirit of that is 20 minutes, 25 of recess is not, does not really want to, you don't want to really take into account the waiting on a lunch line, right? 20 minutes probably means you want a kid to be able to sit and eat lunch for 20 minutes versus 15 on the line and five to eat. So I was like, well, what if we, you know, I don't know, does Witsen's have an app where like, you can put in, just like every other, you know, restaurant chain, you could put in your order for the night before by 6 o'clock, and we put out a table, and boom, your order is there in the morning? So the kids can come in, there's no server-y line anymore. You go, there's your name, you get it, and now you're sitting. So that is much more balcony. Point is, though, is that, or could there be an ops goal to try to solve for some of these things, whether it's a lunch and recess, or something else this year? Because we know a lot of this is also space-related, and we're not going to be able to wave a wand till the bond stuff comes online. So I'm proposing to throw out, there's an operations-type thing. The lunch and recess was one idea, that was much more balcony-ish, but just think about that for consideration, that we could try to work on, on some of the ongoing things that have come up around operations that can't be tied to space, per se, because we can't just make space.
So I would reframe that, Rob, from, this is just the way I look at life, about to what, with the question, to what extent do structures, procedures, policies, or contracts inhibit the way we approach lunch? I wouldn't approach it from, why don't we try this? I, I, I mean that in the most respectful way, but I spend most of my life in, in asking the question first, and then try to figure out some solutions around that. So right away, when you met, I could turn to Alida, like, we have a contract with Witsen's. Part of their contract is based upon how they do lunch, how they perceive lunch, how they order lunch, how they go about it. Like, there's a whole variable of that to it. We did a survey in another life of mine, that the majority of school districts at the time, in the elementary setting, were able to do lunch recess for 45-minute blocks. That tended to be the regular time. We were able, when I was in Pleasantville, to increase it to a half hour, but I had a longer school day. I had a longer school day by 45 minutes. And I had a brand-new, in 2003, elementary school with a server-y that was exactly the way we wanted it to be. So there were features, and then we had contracts over what could be done, and, and the age of the kids, too. Sometimes some little ones take a long time to even just go up and get their food. And maybe that's all part of a learning process, too, as well. So, so I guess all of those things are variables that if, I was asked the question, because that's what I'm hearing, you're asking the question that I'm asking, to what extent do we have? And then you list all the things that make that decision, why it's that. And then when you look at those pieces, are there alternatives to that?
Yeah, and I'm just throwing that one as an example, but forgive me, I'm, I'm a more, and I get it, this is different, you know, it's a public entity, you've got contracts and things that you can't just change, per se. I'm more of a ask-for-forgiveness-than-permission type of person, that's how it's done. But, but that was just an example. But it's more broadly, is there something operationally, Mary? Because I know you, and you know, you know, I've talked about, like, you, you know, you like being in the weeds on operations things. Is there something that we could add? Could be a lunch and recess to explore. It could be something else that we could add, add as a goal, as part of this exercise, that's something that you like. You know what? There's some other things operationally I love to look into for next year or the years beyond. That was a broad...
Well, to me, some of those very specific ones are ones that we would give to administration to do, because we do operations. So you could say, can you look into this? I mean, I remember last year, Alida, I have to give a shout out to Alida, one of the concepts that came out of the board discussion last year had to do around our, our health insurance plan. She's already been having conversations, looking at that. I wouldn't want to make that a goal, because you told us to do, like, that's more operations. We heard that, to be prepared for this year's budget conversation. So maybe, you know, in a, in a summer, that would fall under a broader goal of more efficient and effective system, investigate other ways, for example, health insurance. Like, we could add that to that. Whether or not we're going to be able to achieve that is a whole other. But that would be a way I would take your conversation from last year, what came up. Alida, actually, we talked about over the summer, that's what she's doing. And you could add that into your fiscal goal for this year. If that's operations enough, but yet it kind of, it falls right in a spot that, you know?
I was curious about the lunch and recess thing, and why it is so rigid. And I read an article that was talking about how it didn't used to be that way, but then No Child Left Behind was passed, and now every student succeeds act.
Yes, yes. And I have to be honest with you, Annie. I mean, this is a topic I can go on for about an hour, because I had a huge argument with the Commissioner of Education at the time, Mary Ellen Alea, over this, and the Deputy Commissioner, Joan Ahern at the time, and she basically, I argued that it should be part of the instructional day. They went to a counting of hours. I'm required to fulfill 900 hours in the elementary setting, and 990. So they got so greedy in their conversations that they said, well, you can't, you can't count passing time. So in front of a lot of people, I said, well, then fine, I'll just do away with bells. Because I was arguing that when students are going from classroom to classroom, they're doing PBIS, they're navigating things, that, that downtime where they get to stand and walk as opposed to sitting to another room has value. Why are you dismissing it from how I can count an instructional day? I lost the argument on that. They agreed that I could cancel bells and just have a bell, and it would be the late bell, so I would get three minutes a day. Because now what we do here, because they changed that, is that we spent, we count every minute of the day to hit this 900 minutes, that, 900 hours that we have to do. I even have those conversations with someone, can we do an early dismissal for the PSATs? I said, count the hours, count the hours, count the hours. They were very clear, very clear, that lunch and recess should not be part of the elementary school day. I was able to, in some places, create a recess plan that was ran by a PE teacher, so you could count it as PE time, but that's complicated. To me, I would much prefer we went back to advocating for the state to change that. Because right off the bat, if you're going to do an hour for lunch and recess, that's one hour. one hour of an elementary day you can't count to meet that law.
Yeah, so it was not to dismiss your concerns, because I think all of us would love more lunch and recess, but it was one of the things I found, because I was just curious why it was so rigid, and it seems like it's more of a legislative issue than anything any one school district can ever really do.
Yes, yes, the, the regulation that needs to be changed is 175.4.
It's very specific.
That's exactly the one that needs to be changed. I'd be more than happy to go to Albany again.
I mean, Mary, they were so specific, at some point it was like, 90 minutes of ELA consecutive.
Yes.
So you couldn't even, and they were having first graders do 90 consecutive minutes of ELA. And I remember, at the time, when that was implemented, I mean, it's just not really sound to ask a six-year-old to do anything consecutively for 90 minutes, right? So...
And then they use the term major or minor, something, then, the, I'll never forget, we're standing in the Board of Regents room, she says, Mary, they, when they let them out for recess, they let them, she said, they do this. I said, well, I think doing that is a good thing. She went, okay.
Yeah, so I, yeah, right, and I'm not in any way average, like, I don't get involved with Albany, and Mary, you know that a lot better. But that's why I was offering, like, Annie, like, okay, we, when it can't change, we can't have more time, is there an operations goal? And yes, I was using the lunch recess as an example, like, okay, without waving a wand and getting more space, more hours in the school day, what can, is there a way to try and solve that prior to five, six years from now, when space comes online? So that's what I was proposing, an operations goal with the lunch and recess as one idea. You can plug a lot of the other, maybe, things into that, that's, that's why.
Right, and I think that's what Mary was talking about when she mentioned insurance, for example, right? As more of an operations thing.
Yes, yeah, yeah, insurance would be an example.
I'm not against going to Albany.
Yes.
So, I want to, I want to take the temp.
If I had to pick one, it's to explore a lunch and recess, with a primary sub-goal of can't extend date, can't have more time, how do we get kids 20 minutes of lunch and 25 recess, and through operations? That would, so it's a little...
Does anybody, I mean, I have something to contribute to the conversation, but I don't, I want to make sure other people have the opportunity to speak on this.
I was just thinking that maybe it wouldn't be a bad legislative committee goal to kind of try to, you know, put out letters to Albany and do what we can in that direction, too. I know you're talking about something more in the short term, but...
Well, that we can do, I mean...
Yeah, exactly, we can do both.
I'm, I'm seeking, I think that that's a good idea, but I want to focus us on the district goals right now, and take our temperature on adding an operational goal that would be to, I don't know, examine our lunch and recess times, which, like I said, I want, before I...
I don't know, operational goals can be like, a broader topic than just, just a lunch and a recess type of thing, but, you know, I guess the question here is, like, you know, we're not, do we have examples of operational goals that have been done in other districts that we might look at, and if it's not, are we creating one here or so? What are the things we, that, that fall underneath there? It's just a, it's a broader question, so I, I don't think that it's like, an easy yes or no answer, I do think that there's just a little bit more further to be explored. But I know our trustee, Banta's here, so I want to give her some airtime.
I, I will say, to help support the point, the operations goal that I've seen, this curriculum policy would be an example of one. It's broad enough, but yet specific enough. The, the equity goal has a real broad reach that you'll get a lot of good information from. It's still in the, the questioning, what policies do exist around that, right?
From where everyone's leaving off, I'm just kind of soaking it all in. I think we've talked about the district goals and how they align with, you know, the strategic plan, and just kind of fortifying that, and it sounds like the discussion is around just being more specific with some of those, with some, with what some of those goals will achieve. So not too much to add right now at this point.
Can I add, just because it, we're brainstorming here, that might fall under a wellness goal, you know, a broader wellness goal. You could add a student wellness goal.
I want that better.
The schedules have already been set.
Right.
So, in order to test something like that, it would have to be towards January if they reset their schedules. I don't see that happening at the elementary schools, they're like, tight, 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 tight. We did explore that type of system where they can order their food mainly at the high school, and that was before CEP. And the challenge that we had was having access, parents having access to those systems. So there are systems that allow for this order process, but the access is the issue. Have a, a choice in what they, the students have a choice in what they want to eat. But as far as trying to test reducing lines, it would be very hard to do that while we're in session. You'd have to think about that while you're planning going forward.
Right.
Because that would upset the apple cart dramatically, especially at the elementary level. And then the other thing is, the easiest way to reduce lines is to have more stations. And that's a conversation with Witsen's. If we were to do something like that, they would probably push back, because that affects their profit line. We've been very profitable in the program, but certainly, if we just started, first of all, we don't have the space here. We do, you typically have a kiosk over here for snacks, but you literally, the way you reduce the waiting time is you have to add more staff. And if it causes them to lose their profitability, they're going to push back.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we, I love the framing of it as a wellness goal, I love, I think that's great. Not looking to necessarily say, change, make by the end of the year, make sure every kid has 20 minutes to eat and get rid of the lines, not suggesting that. But I am proposing, we explore it. So is it servery? Has the app stuff changed? What does that look like? I don't know, I don't know, this is not my expertise, but the, the idea was to do, like, some research, time the lines, like, validate what I'm saying, I can tell you anecdotally, I'm hearing, like, here, there's two lines, if you're not in the beginning of the line by the time lunch starts here at 10:30 for sixth graders, you're not getting food until 15 minutes in, and then you have a choice now between recess and that. So I think that's anecdotally, but I'm just saying, a report, explore it, and then if there's, what solutions, great, and if that's a multi-year thing to look at, but that's, that was the proposal, not solve it this year. That would be wonderful, but not solve it.
Right.
Just, just take a look, and then look towards a plan to solve around this wellness.
So if you did a wellness goal around what procedures, policies, and structures do we have that, or we could bring forth that would increase more opportunity for students to have better lunch and recess experience? I mean, like, so it's broad enough to encompass, you know, it can encompass more...
Wellness goal would allow us to, you know, think, I mean, because we talk about SEL, but there's also the wellness goal of physical wellness, as well as mental health, health wellness, right?
Mental health, right, and you could put that underneath there, right?
I mean, it may nestle, it may not even need to be broken out, we may be talking about adding a subcategory to our student goal, which would be okay with me. I, I don't think I want to be as specific as, as lunch and recess, because I feel like I'm having a little bit of deja vu, in that you had brought up these concerns last year, and then Alida came back with all of the explanations for why things are the way they are, and why we are in the situation we're in, and how much is immovable, and I don't expect to hear that a lot will have changed between last year and this year. So I feel like we've been there, done that very recently, and that's part of why we went out so hard for this bond, right? Like, we know that the biggest limitations are the space, and we have other forces outside of us, we have contracts, not only with our food providers, but with our teachers and support staff, that don't all turn over at the same time, right? So we can, you know, talk, when we talk about contract negotiations, we can talk about, you know, how, how that's, like, operationally, how that works. I don't know...
I, I mean, the board can ask the principals when they're here, talk about the challenges you have with lunch and recess, certainly, would feel free, I actually told them, you'll probably get that question. I know at AMD, there were four lunch periods to address that, but it, but it brought up other problems. So they went back to three lunch periods for each grade level to address. So it's like, looking at the situation, which you did four, that, that brought up its own, it might have decreased the level of, so it's a good question to ask when the principals do present.
Right, and that's kind of where I feel like that's where the level of, that's where it belongs, like, to use your, you know, crawl, walk, run verbiage, like, this is our first set of goals, and I'm worried about bloating it too much.
Yeah.
And so, I'm not, I don't want to dismiss your concerns, because I do share them. And I do think more recess would be better for our students in particular, you know, that side of the, of the equation. But I also understand the challenges, and I don't, I don't think that we're going to be able to solve that this year anyway, because of so many outside forces and just pieces that aren't going, I know that they're not going to fit together at the end of the year. And I, I still, that doesn't mean, just because it's not in this goal, doesn't mean we never hear about it, right? In the same way that we submit questions and then get the answers back, we can ask Mary, when we're talking about setting the agenda and what we want to see in presentations, to talk to us about those challenges, so that we can maybe better understand them, if we don't feel like we understand them. And so what I'm feeling like is that that, I just maybe too specific, or too off the balcony to put, it's not broad enough in my, in my mind, to put it specifically in this, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not sure that this document is where that, I want that to live.
That, that's fine, so I just, just, so we can move on, just get the point. Does the board administration feel like we can explore how to try to solve prior to buildings being built and more space being available, the lunch and recess thing? We know the challenges. It's scheduling, it's contracts, it's serveries. I'm trying to get to, how do we try to solve it prior to the next five to seven years? Because we're kids, we, we should try to solve it. And, and if it means, when the contract comes up, that we mean, we put an app in there, that's it. If it's, I don't know, I'm not, I'm staying on, way up in the balcony on that. But if we don't explore it, and we don't check the times, and we don't, we, we know what the challenges are, we won't solve it, and we're just, you know, respectfully, we'll be waiting for the buildings to solve it, the new buildings. So that's what I'm trying to drive towards. We know the challenges, how do we figure out, how to try to fix this particular issue? We have other things we want, you know, we have general space, we could put in, you know, a space goal. I know, Mary, you look at that all the time, other, other buildings, other, the movables or trailers. Just trying to get to, try to move forward on that one, that particular one, because that's yes near and dear to me, and I assume others as well, because I hear it from the community, we saw, you know, someone wrote in about that, I didn't put that person up to it, they wrote it separately about this. How do we try to solve it? That, that's what I'm getting at. So if it's not a goal in here, you don't want to articulate, that's fine, but it would be nice to move on that this year, in the next six to seven months, to try to get some information, and then try to solve it in the next X amount of time. That's what I'm trying to get at.
I think each of the principals, I will say, they would love nothing more than giving kids more recess time. I don't think, and, and they have, they, you can ask each of the elementary principals different ways they tried scheduling, different approaches towards it, trying to work with Alida on food service, how do we try kiosks, like we did here? I mean, it's a question, because they would love to do that, there isn't a ministry that would want to do that. So I'm not saying it's not, but it would be fascinating, you could ask them what challenges they have when they're trying to schedule for lunch and recess. Or I, I can compile it and get, give you a report on it, either way is fine, I can do that, right?
Just, I just want to add also, we have been putting a lot of staff in charging it to C-Fund. So we are, when principals ask for more support in the cafeteria, we've been giving them that. We went to a couple of hundred thousand dollars of C-Fund charges to almost a million, I think over a million, in the 22, 23 school year.
Right.
So, they, they come to me, they come to Dawn, and they ask if they can get some more support, and we're able to do that, because we do have funds available in the cafeteria fund.
Alida, thank you for bringing that up, because that's, and it was part of our budget conversation, so what that did, though, it might not even increase the time, but it's, or maybe a minute or two, because you've added more monitors, you've added more staff to help move kids, and you're looking at increasing the quality of the time. So you're not spending, you don't have one or two people lining kids up, helping them move, you've got multiple bodies to do that. So we've added significant staff to that, to help support kids in a very safe environment when they're out. I mean, like, there are, there are things we'd love to do, we'd love to put more fencing around some of the playground areas, and you'll hear that probably in this year's budget conversations as a capital goal, so, yeah.
Looking, I'm, I'm looking around for any more contributions. I, I feel like I'm okay with, like, let's get an update from Mary, let's, explaining the challenges and welcoming any ideas for potential solutions from our building principals and Mary. But I don't, like I said, I don't know if I want to, I mean, if we want to put that as the goal, I'm okay with, with that, you know, to, that we will, you know, learn more, explore more, and nestle that within the student goal, which can be broadened to, to But it needs to be more than Rob and I in this conversation, in order to, to build a consensus somewhere.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
With, with what?
In terms of, I mean, I, I think, in terms of what we're going to be moving forward here, because I think the question was like, around pretty much, are we ready to move this forward the way that we're...
Right, well, I was ready before this meeting started to move this forward as is, but...
I mean, I, I think honestly, there's, these goals are written in a way that I think, you know, it's, we've talked about the things that we need to talk about, right? And, and I think, you know, from the perspective of, we talked about wellness, if we need to incorporate that in some degree in here, health and wellness, we, we can incorporate that, but I'm just thinking, is that, can that be part of the thinking as we plan forward, or does that have to be crystallized in here specifically? That's a question, I don't, I mean...
That's, that is the question I'm asking. That's, that is the question I'm asking you.
No, no, no. I'm, 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 I know, I'm throwing that, I'm throwing that back.
So again, we are behind the, you know, eight ball behind this, and we'll end up in November before, for the year, then it'll be mid-year. So either way, I mean, we can have a very broad goal about adding under student a bullet for a wellness goal that addresses how do we support social emotional learning for students and also in terms of increasing opportunities for lunch and recess. That's very broad, that's very there, and...
The description of the student goal includes all of that. So are you, wouldn't it be more of a bullet point under student goals to be more specific as opposed to a whole new goal?
That's what I'm suggesting, is that it lives in there.
That's what we're saying, is that we could put that as a sub-bullet versus it being its own separate goal. So it's just a bolt on to that.
I like a sub-bullet. Most of the things that I can think of are encompassed because they are so broad. And I worry about getting too into the weeds as board members.
Yes. And I would encourage the board to look at, I mean, I can certainly gather them and give it to your update. What a lot of districts do in terms of goals, this is similar in many ways, you know, except for big initiatives or, you know, something again, like what I mentioned, what Alita's doing about the health insurance. That came from all of you. That was her operational goal this year, and she's been working on that based on the board's conversations last year on health insurance.
Which I would argue falls under our fiscal goals.
Right. Yeah. Explore different options for health insurance.
That's the context in which that conversation came up, right?
Explore different options for recess lunch, you know, that can be there. It's just the explore, it's not increase, explore different options. You can, very broad, very general, but, yeah.
So we can pen these in and then say move it forward, or what do we have to do?
I, what I would, I would suggest that Mary pen this in and then send it out. We don't even have everyone here tonight. I don't feel comfortable greenlighting it without them. But then, just to confirm, Melissa, you feel like you're okay with, like, kind of sub-bullet regarding exploring the challenges to provide students with adequate lunch and recess in support of their SCL?
I'm trying to figure out the question you're asking me. Because all I'm saying is that that student goal encompasses SCL needs. And I would think feeding children equitably and appropriately would be part of addressing their, one of the most basic SCL needs. But are we saying that we want to make sure that we put a bullet there to not lose focus of that particular SCL need?
Yes, that's the ask. How are you feeling?
How am I feeling?
How are you feeling about that? What do you want to do?
I mean, it's, you know, if we feel the need, if we feel it needs a bullet, so to not lose track of it, I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure by pulling, putting that bullet there, that doesn't mean that, that that goal is going to supersede all other SCL-related goals that might fall under that, right? Or, you know, like, you know, like, you know, that, like, our attention is going to be like a highlighted SCL point at that point when there's probably a multitude of SCL needs to address and kind of drill down it. So I'm saying, which, you know, I'm just weighing it. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm weighing, like, what is that saying by specifying lunch as a primary SCL need to address? I'm not saying it's not at the top, but.
Right. And to Melissa's point, I guess that's why adding specificity here is a tricky thing, because what are you saying about the other pieces, but yet you want a board goal? So that's why big-ticket items like your $210 million bond, the eight million we're spending on health insurance, like, those are bigger things. But the board, of course, is entitled to get every piece of information they want. So this idea about how can we explore more recess time, more lunchtime, that can be certainly a report we can generate for you. You can ask the principals coming up. All of the above is fine with me. But that tricky piece that Melissa just nailed in her point is sometimes what I've seen boards struggle on, how much do you add in terms of specificity and what does it say about the other things? Because the goals are meant to capture those things. And each building will interpret that differently. Does that make sense?
And I think that's where I was going back to, is like, you know, if you, if you kind of put in, just in the basics of health and wellness, and that becomes like that as the bullet, right, health and wellness goal, pursuing a health and wellness goal, there's nothing, I think that's broad enough that that can be used in, used to kind of look at that across the district. But if we say, and I completely get your point, because if you say lunch and recess, then everybody else is going to say, but what about all these other things that fell in, that should have gone in there, right? What about, and I get that. So keeping them broad, I'm, I support that, you know, with, with the understanding that, you know, there'll probably be some asks about this at a later reporting time. So, you know, broad strokes, yes, perhaps. Are we specific? Point well taken.
That's where I, I mean, that's how I was trying to articulate my feelings, is that I don't disagree with the concern, and I don't think that we should ignore it, but I'm not sure if this is where it lives, spelled out.
Well, that, that's a goal, an agenda item, I guess, as long, putting it out there. If there's consensus that that is something we want to look at, by the time we get to August, I'm hoping that we will have some of those data points. It's true that kids only have five minutes to eat. They're only getting eight minutes of recess. So here's what we found, and here's, then we can work on some recommendations, maybe to take a second look at some of those. That's all. It doesn't have to be articulated there. If it's going to get, be able to be, get done in some other, again, agenda item, non-agenda, a report, a weekend update, whatever it is.
Okay. Okay. Given that, if you're okay with that, we might not need to change this. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that would be my opinion, because it does say SCL in there. And that's, health and wellness is a foundational point of SCL needs. So I think by, you know, I don't know. That's just, I'm just giving my feedback. As, as, as a way to make sure we're not making it too cumbersome and overthinking, like, the structures. I think the presentations that we've gotten, the information we've gotten to date around SCL would, would, I guess, you know, it would say to me at least, that those are things that are considered. Health and wellness are factors of that. And what we're saying as a board, it sounds like, is that we want to make sure, in the back of our mind, when we're asking for information around SCL needs, that that's something that we're going to explore too now, is what does lunch look like, what does recess look like?
And that would be what Melissa's saying, each of the principals will reflect that You know, briefly, like, those are gigantic grants. Would the board like those highlighted here in their board goals? Like, you can add the PTEC grant to it. How much is that worth, Maria? Just remind everyone. 1.5?
1.8 million.
Million dollars. So, so like, those are huge things that this board that we're doing that occupy a lot of time, a lot of people. So, you know, that's a grant I would, the mental health, I'd put a, like, a star next to those, like, you know, a board goal around New York, gear up. Like, that's, that's a huge amount of money. Only 11 in New York State got that grant. So that's the level of balcony stuff that I think, you know, and the report back on those. So, so the, the mental health grant really is super important, particularly because of the unique needs of adolescents as they, pre-teens, it has a different approach towards it. So.
So, works, totally works. So what, just not to get off track, because I know we're trying to probably stay to time, but, so then, what would then be the mechanism that if it's not going, because like, these things, right, the counterpoint to that is, we're supposed to be specific, which obviously, right, there is specificity in here, because we have the ex officio on, we have the equity and then the bullet point, but it's fine, can let it go. But just then, what would be the mechanism then to do this lunch and recess thing in terms of that? Like, what, what?
I think we're experiencing it right now, Rob. I think that coming out of this, I'm going to leave it to Mary for how she would feel that would be best delivered, either through presentations that we're already receiving, like, she can ask our principals to incorporate that, if, or she can do an update, like, whatever, we can leave that to Mary, however she feels it would be appropriate to relay kind of the challenges and potential suggestions towards easing the burden of, of a cramped lunch and recess.
We will talk to Jared, because it involves custodial time if we add another lunch period. There's a lot of variables with that. Happy to do that.
And then, I mean, that doesn't have to be like a this week thing, right? With the, I think, bringing it up during district goals, I think my understanding is here, is that this might take a while to process.
Exactly right.
All right. Great. So just to recap, we might want to add kind of a bullet for curriculum instructional goals in consultation with the principals for something that they feel would be a reasonable way to measure their progress for this year. And then no other substantive changes. And I will ask Mary to send that out at some point when you complete it, and then we can green light it hopefully at our next meeting. Does that sound copacetic? Okay. Let's move on.
I just wanted to say with the growth stuff, I did send out an email. I don't know if you guys already sent, but it was growth with ARC across different districts and different states.
Cool. Thank you. I have not seen it yet. But I will. Did you just send it?
I'll look.
I'll look. I'll look. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have already handled item 5.1. Does anybody have anything they wish to break out between 5.2 and 5.5?
I guess technically 5.3, only because I have a question.
Okay. I'll take a resolution for 5.2, 5.4, and 5.5.
So moved.
Second.
5.2, resolution authorizing a capital construction project and authorizing the insurance issuance of serial bonds. 5.4, resolution to appoint consultants for the 2024, 2025 school year. 5.5, resolution to approve the amended scope of work with Open Door Family Medical Center. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I'll take a motion for 5.3.
So moved.
Second.
5.3, resolution to approve the appointment of the officials who served at the bond vote held on September 24th, 2024. Any discussion?
Yeah. So just to clarify, we're retroactively approving these individuals who served at the bond vote. Okay.
Billy says yes. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. On to consent agenda personnel matters. Looking at 6 point, I'll take a motion for 6.1 through, or I should say, does anybody have anything they wish to break out between 6.1 and 6.17? I'll take a motion for 6.1 through 6.17?
So moved. Second.
6.1, resolution regarding rescinding professional staff appointments. 6.2, resolution regarding support staff rescind of leave of absences. 6.3, resolution regarding professional staff resignations. 6.4, resolution regarding support staff resignations. 6.5, resolution regarding administrative staff appointments. 6.6, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. 6.7, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments. 6.8, resolution regarding support staff appointments. 6.9, resolution regarding bus attendant appointments. 6.10, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before after-school programs. 6.11, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments before after-school programs. 6.12, resolution regarding support staff appointments before after-school programs. 6.13, resolution regarding APPR, annual professional performance review accountability. 6.14, resolution regarding per diem substitute removals. 6.15, resolution regarding per diem substitute appointments. 6.16, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. 6.17, resolution regarding support staff requests for a leave of absence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Does anything, does anybody have anything they wish to break out between 7.1 and 7.4? I'll take a motion for 7.1 through 7.4.
So moved.
Second.
7.1, resolution to accept donation from North Shore Animal League Roosevelt/Mutagrees Program. 7.2, resolution regarding disposal of gymnastics equipment. 7.3, resolution regarding appointment of consultant, Eugene Lynn District Office. 7.4, resolution regarding interfund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. We've come to our second public comment period. Is there anybody in person here who wishes to speak? All right. We state, I think this public comment period is limited to 15 minutes. We're about to begin our second, third, I guess technically, public comment period of our meeting, not to exceed 15 minutes. I'm going to read some excerpts from our public comment period guidelines. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel or individual student matters. On these matters, we ask you go through the appropriate administrative channel. Each individual speaker is allotted up to three minutes. You can introduce yourself, state your address, and begin your comment.
Sure. I'm Joe Oremalik. Wow. My address is 20 Osage Drive West. I am the president of the OACPTA, so I speak mostly for pre-K through second. I did want to say that one of the goals that we would love to see is an after-school or before-school program. Going to say it again, just to, we've been looking into some grants. There are some grants called leaps from the state that offer like $500,000 to $600,000 a year. I don't know if you guys have looked into that. It is the registration, or you have to have it submitted by early spring, so it's like April. So we're already done for this year, so that's something we can look into next year. I think that would be great. I love the idea you guys are talking about, about sending, expanding the recess time and lunchtime. It is half of what our PTA meetings are about. I've talked to both principals. They're exhausted trying to find ways to make it work. So if that is something that can happen, I mean, they're just, they're just like, we know. And they just, they kind of throw their hands down.
They would love to. They want to. They do.
So, and then the last thing that we've gotten a lot of feedback from our members is teachers and administrators or anybody posting photos of pictures of kids on Twitter, X, whatever we're calling it. I don't know what the policy is. We'd love some feedback for that, but it seems to be they're just allowing it. I know there's a photo opt-out and some of our members are like, we opted out, but I just saw my kid on X. And is that something that we want to look at in a greater perspective for the people that are concerned about AI? And we see what is happening with AI, how people do not want their kids on social media for all of the reasons of, you know, spoofing their kids, that sort of thing. So those kind of three things our members care a lot about. We had about 50 people at our last general PTA meeting, which was great to see all those people in person and online. But they're really, those were the three key things that they were focused on. So I want to just leave that to you guys and express that for our community.
Thank you. I will say, anybody who wants to be added to the do not photograph list can email Nicole Reese. She's the contact person for that. And I will say, just personally, on a personal note, because my own children are on it, sometimes they still end up on social media in error. And that I find that I'll have, it takes an email to Nicole Reese and it's gone. So.
Yeah. And sometimes people do it and then repost other things. Sometimes that happens. Nicole is right on it immediately as soon as she finds out, right? And she reminds people of the policy very strongly. And I remind the principals of it, too.
So certainly, I would direct. So certainly I would direct, direct anybody with any questions about that policy to Nicole Reese because she's our person, point, person for that. Seeing no other audience members, uh, is there anybody online who wishes to speak? Okay. Uh, so we will move on to board reports and dialogue. I wrote a reminder to myself at this point to also remind us to speak into the microphone. Have any committees met that would like to report out?
Oh.
Yeah.
I remember a meeting here.
Take it away.
The governance, um, self-governance committee met and, um, we sent out a letter for the student, um, ex officio board member to everyone.
Yes, in response to that, I would like to send that out. I was hoping to send it out maybe yesterday, but our, um, student rep is not here anyway. So it's like, okay, well, can, as long as we get it out before next time. But, uh, if there's no objection to the letter as it was written, I'll send it out from my email address. Sounds good?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm going to pass it off to you. My computer died, so I don't have my notes.
Yeah, so we, uh, we, um, established a draft of the letter for the board to, to look at, to send out to welcome the new student member. And we also kind of shorted up some additional goals of the committee, um, following the original, uh, or expanding on the timeline that we established when we first established the committee last, at the end of the last school year. So, um, a lot of that is just going to be around making sure that we, as a committee, kind of like quarterly meetings, but also kind of just keep in touch if something is, just comes up that would, you know, allow us or need us to kind of step in and help. Um, so a lot of this stuff, we're just building on a lot of the goals that were already set already last time. And I just wanted to pull up just to make sure, but our agenda was pretty, pretty tight and to the point. We really didn't add much more except around welcoming the new student member and kind of being more, you know, making that a part of our, our goals as well as a committee. We talked about a couple of other things, but after we flushed them out, decided it wasn't really a, a governance committee type of thing.
And you did send a nice reminder email to me about some to-dos to put on my list. So I, and that's the purpose, right? Like that's what we're doing. So I appreciate that. A productive, a productive subcommittee or productive committee.
It was. It was. We got a, really got in there, um, got to the point and that template that we created last, at the end of last year, really helped us kind of go in there and get right to, down to brass tacks. So.
Did, um, did you already cover the things that Catherine wanted to bring up during board dialogue?
I didn't. Let me pull up the note. Do you remember offhand what those were?
No, I wish my computer hadn't died.
I didn't really, see, I, I knew you said you were going to bring it up, so I didn't, I didn't. I can, if someone else has something to discuss, I can circle back.
Okay.
I'll pull it up.
Um, I do. Uh, I, you may have seen, or maybe you didn't, uh, because it was just tucked right into, uh, Mary's update. We were trying to establish a, um, exec session on a Saturday, uh, to discuss contract issues, uh, on November 2nd or 9th. Catherine had emailed that she was away on the 9th. Either date works for me. Has anybody looked at their calendar for this?
I prefer the second.
I can do the second.
Can you, can someone clarify not so much why we need the session, but why on a Saturday versus just doing it at the end of one of our?
I think, um, we need to be fresh for it. And it's an, I mean, we can talk more executively.
Do, do you, do we have an anticipation of how long? Because that affects my answer of the availability of either day. Is this like an all-day thing? Is this?
I don't think so.
An hour or two hours?
What do you think, Mary?
Well, it depends, right? You know, if you set a target of like a couple of hours and we should be focused and able to do that.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to do more than a few hours.
As long as people did their homework ahead of time, you know, make for a very efficient conversation.
Okay.
I mean, I've got things on the 2nd and the 9th in the morning. I don't know if we were thinking, you know, just like normal personal life stuff. So.
Right.
I don't know if we're thinking a certain time or.
We're, we're really just floating the days right now. If you have a specific time that works better for you, right? Are we flexible on time?
Flexible, flexible.
I'm flexible on time. I, it sounds like I'm hearing more people are available on the 2nd. If we can't get everybody, we can't get everybody. It's a Saturday and it's November and.
It's in person, right? It's in person, right?
Yes. Location TBD. It sounds like we'll, we'll pick the 2nd because I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Melissa, do you have any, are you, is there like a hard out for you for either one of these dates?
No.
Okay. And we'll see.
I found the things that you want to talk about.
I just pulled it up, took it away.
Where are we with student involvement at BOE meetings? I feel like we have covered that.
Yeah.
Um, where are we with norms? Are they finalized and published?
Oh, that's, I have that on my list as well, too.
District goals we talked about today. And then where are we with the BOE handbook?
Those are also on my list. And I don't know if I put them on there or if Catherine put, told me, like, can we discuss the support dialogue? And I put it on my list. So I don't remember how it got there.
But it's on the list.
But it's on the list. So let's talk. Um, I'm feeling good about our handbook and norms because I feel like we really were within like five minutes of being finished the last time that we, um, talked about either of those things. How do others feel? Like, are we okay to publish once provided, I think there was some like document cleanup, like making sure page numbers matched and a table of contents, like that kind of, um, just editing. But barring that, were people okay with where we were in order to kind of move forward with them?
I, I, I am individual, yeah.
I feel like we were very thorough with the handbook.
Right. And, and the, I want to be respectful of everybody's time. I don't want to have another meeting if we're going to do.
Are you talking about the norms?
The norms.
Or the, or everything?
Everything.
Okay.
Do you?
No, I'm just trying to think back because I know there was an intersection between the handbook and the policy committee having to do a couple of just tweaks to certain areas.
We were going to.
Before the manual.
Right.
Rolled out.
If I recall, we were going to change the policies to match the handbook. Because we had all agreed on what those, what the handbook should read.
Right. So what my question was, do we want to, the timelines to match where that was updated before we disseminated the manual?
Right.
Um, I, I, it was just a, like, like, I think that's where we left off is like, you know, do we put the cart before the horse or what happens or does it matter or what? Like, we all agree to what needs to change. We just need to do it.
Right.
So, but is that a problem though? Because it's not yet changed and we're putting out that manual.
Noted. I think that's an excellent point.
So I think that kind of answers the timeline of maybe that.
Right. Let's have.
First order of business of our first, um, policy committee meeting. Just get that out the way so we can get that, the handbook out.
Same wavelength. Let's do that. But in the, I think our norms should be good though.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we can.
I believe so. I, I don't know about anybody else, but that was my recollection.
Okay. I'm going to make a note to myself here. And I'm just going to leave this handbook kind of hanging here. That's all I had on my board dialogue list. Our, so just to, if anybody has no objection, we'll wait on the handbook until the policy is updated and then we'll be able to just green light the handbook and the norms are good to go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, any other?
Yeah, just a reminder tomorrow is the, uh, municipal business meeting, uh, virtual business meeting. So I'll be, starts at four o'clock virtually. Um, so I'll be going and, you know, representing the discussions that we had around the resolutions.
All right. And you got the link already. They sent.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Roger, you're our alternate for that, if I recall. Do you have the link to, you, you, you might need to forward the actual link to vote to Roger.
They don't communicate that to you?
He gets a separate link that's just to view it. So.
Okay.
I would, read your email and check and then you guys.
Uh, mine was just a link.
So you might need to forward your email to him if you want to be able to tag out, just in case. I'm not 100% on that, but that might be the safest bet, just in case. You never know, you know, those meetings are so long.
You don't want to, something to happen and that's when you realize that the link isn't the right link.
Right.
Or you don't have the right link. Yeah.
Well, just remind me again, because I'm looking for this right now. Um, what was the time on that?
Four o'clock it starts.
There were no questions on our resolutions during the Q and A, which I'm taking as a good sign.
Yes. Annie and I were both able to listen in to part of it. I listened in on the way home. I think the idea of that, I don't think they've done it before. I think the idea of that was to reduce the length of this meeting coming up. So if people had their questions, they could get it out of the way.
Mm-hmm.
And they had a really hard time honestly, like moderating it so that people weren't discussing the actual merits of the propositions and instead just asking clarifying questions. It was a little bit of a, it was an interesting meeting to listen to. I'll say that. All right. Anything else? Thank you for reminding me about that, Annie, um, meeting night. All right. So I'm going to take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions.